Good afternoon. We'll go ahead and start the pre-meeting for the West Jordan Planning Commission meeting, August 1st, 2023. How's that? Um, do we have training?
No training.
Okay. Um, anybody have any questions about, um, the minutes from last week?
I do.
Okay.
I noticed there's some dialogue between Larry Gardner and Commissioner Richardson that it was not included in the minutes. And I would like to see that in there, but I'm not opposed if Larry does not want it in there. Okay, I'll bring it up then when we have our final approval. Thank you.
And typically, I mean, it's clarifying or correcting language, right? But yeah, it's as Larry mentioned, your bylaws allow you as a commission to do that. And if you vote on it, it passes.
Okay, we'll address that in the regular meeting. Okay, um, item number two, public hearing with final action by the planning commission for the 9,000 South roadway extension. And it looks like. Taylor.
Yep, it's me.
Have to read a little bit to get down to your name. Okay. How about it?
All right, um, first, before I get into this, I just wanted to mention that we do this as preliminary and final. We're just going to do preliminary today. Final will come back as a staff level approval, but there's some stuff that we have to work through possibly. So we want to just keep it as a preliminary approval tonight. And also note that when we get to the conditions of approval, one of those will be slightly different than what was in the staff report. I'll make sure I go over that when we get to it. But what we're looking at is about thirteen and a half acres being dedicated to the city. This would allow for an extension of 9,000 South from 6,400 West all the way to U-11. This dedication will allow for the construction of, uh, I think it's a five-lane arterial. Yes, yeah, a five-lane arterial which, um, we've received money from the state to construct about $10 million. Uh, eventually the plan is for this road to be transferred to UDOT in a jurisdiction, uh, transfer. So, um, we're making sure that as we go through these approvals, everything's, uh, meeting the UDOT standard so that they can take that when the time comes. Um, with that, I'm happy to see questions you might have.
I'll just say you answered the question I did have, which was, will it be transferred to UDOT?
Yes.
Because I know that UDOT is, uh, or the 90th is owned by UDOT. So, thank you.
Commissioner Richardson.
Yes, um, I must be hard of hearing or something because nobody else is complaining, but I oftentimes can't hear you very well. Can you have the microphone a little closer to you?
Yeah, absolutely. Sorry about that.
Sorry, I just, you know, and I don't want to shout out that I can't hear you. But, um, oftentimes I, I really can't hear everything that you're saying.
Uh, I think sometimes I, uh, try to be quieter because I've been known for being very loud since I was a child. It's always been a problem, so. Yeah.
Any other questions or comments? Okay, item number three, public hearing with planning commission recommendations to the city council for final action. This is a text amendment, PRD and residential lot and bulk standards. And Scott.
Yeah, you get to hear from me tonight a little bit more. Uh, this was, uh, one of those, uh, directions or directives from the city council. And so you can see in your packet that this goes back to earlier this spring where some of the council members, um, wanted just to look at our code and see how, how it was consistent, where it was inconsistent. And, uh, the, uh, as you have experienced here on the commission, different applications highlight, um, gaps perhaps in our code or, or elements in our code that need to be refined. And this was one of them. They had a, had the development there on the corner of 48th and seven, and 48th and 90th that for some, uh, highlighted some gaps and, and some adjustments that needed to be made in the code. And so, uh, the full council, um, basically commissioned a cou- a couple of the council members to form an ad hoc committee to work with me and, and some other staff members to, to figure out if, uh, if any adjustments need to be made to bring the PRD zone specifically to greater conformance with our, our PC zone. And so, one of the things that, that, uh, council, council member Whitlock and vice chair Bloom, um, really focused on was the driveway setbacks. And, uh, it did the driveway, sorry, the driveway, uh, depth, not the setbacks, the house setbacks. And so, uh, the best way to really, uh, affect the driveway length is to talk about front yard setbacks. And so you'll, you'll see that listed here as one of the primary changes to this code. As, as you crack open the code, you know, it's, um, it's good to look in a comprehensive way. And, and so they started to look at all of the residential zones. And so, uh, one of the, uh, the recommendations that you'll see in this proposal is that, uh, the 22-foot, uh, front yard setback, AKA the 22-foot long driveway, uh, is to be consistent across our residential zones. The council does have the ability to, there are some exceptions that can be made, but that's, that's the gist of it. Um, in addition to that, uh, we brought this back to the, after this ad hoc committee, we brought this back to the full council back in June and made sure that we were pointed in the right direction. They, they gave us their unofficial thumbs up to draft this code and to bring it back for discussion here at the commission for a recommendation. And then, uh, and then we'll, we'll bring it forward to the council. But, uh, on page, let's see, two of your report, uh, you can see that the four bullet points that this co- that this code amendment proposes to do. There were some other adjustments to propose for the PRD zone that we bring it in more alignment, more consistent with the PC zone. And you can, you can see that there, and I'll be happy to cover those as, as you'd like in, in the main meeting. But I'll be quiet. Is, is there, is there any questions or concerns?
I've got one very minor concern, and it is, um, regarding the 22-foot setback specifically on knuckles and circles.
Yeah.
Um, I feel like there needs to be some flexibility there, which the code currently allows, but could be taken away. Is that a big deal? And can I just get staff's opinion on that? Is that a, is that a problem?
I'm glad you asked that question. Um, I had similar thoughts going into this. It's been years since I've reviewed building permits. Yeah, and, uh, he's not here tonight, but, uh, Mark Forsyth is the champion when it comes to reviewing these, these building permits. He's done it for years and years. And so I asked, I asked Mark, is your, with your experience, do you see reducing? I guess the change right now would be moving it from 20 feet to 22 feet. So I said, is two feet going to make a, a, a big difference? And generally, he's, he said, no, there is always the, going to be some, some weird exception. But he said that the two foot, uh, difference is really not going to change a whole lot. Now, the smaller the lot, the greater the potential for an issue, right? And so a lot of these home builders come in with their cookie cutter, um, designs, and they just stamp them out. And so they may have to make some tweaks and modifications on these, on these, uh, pie-shaped lots as they, as, as they come in on cul-de-sacs or knuckles. But generally, uh, Mark, and Mark's very direct. He would, he would be very clear if there was an issue. And he indicated that it through with his experience, it really wouldn't make a big difference. Yeah.
I'd like to welcome everyone today. Oh, yeah, thank you for handling it. So I guess for text amendment daycares, huh?
Yes, um, the genesis of this was the council, well, a church, uh, in the M1 zone, which exists in the M1 zone, I should say, churches are allowed. I wanted to run a full-time daycare. Um, it was not a use that was allowed, uh, and so it went to, Alan, did it go to a committee of the whole or a committee of the whole meeting with the council? And a majority of the council, uh, felt that daycares are an appropriate use in the M1 zone, which isn't an industrial zone. And so it is a relatively simple, uh, amendment to the M1 zone, basically putting daycare in the use table and as a permitted use. Uh, the definitions already exist, um, in the code, daycare general and daycare limited, both types to be allowed in the M1 zone. Um, and so it's really just as simple as that. It's, it's a fairly straightforward, simple, uh, text amendment. Um, I really don't see it as an, you know, impact, uh, to the, the people running the daycare, uh, in this. And it may also, uh, you know, fill an understated need within the industrial zone if someone is dropping their children off while they work in that area. And so if you have any questions for me.
I got one question.
Yes.
Not initially the who, but what, what was the reasoning behind the dissenting vote? Uh, you said the majority of the council, so I assume there's somebody that was.
Um, was there anyone, Alan, do you remember? Alan's gonna look and I, I don't. All I got was, uh, four goes and I went out the door and went home. But I don't look, no, sorry. It was a long time ago, but I don't, Alan will look and, um.
Okay, Commissioner Richardson, you got a comment?
Okay, so if it's not a permitted use, then that would mean it has to go before the commission.
No, no, a permitted use, it's permitted by right. They would just need to, uh, take out a business license as well. Conditional use would come before the planning commission, but a permitted use would just be a license requirement.
Okay, so right now it's, there's no.
It's not allowed at all. It's prohibited.
Okay, and anywhere, so they just have, so the differences that.
Yeah.
The automatic rather than, um, okay.
So the use isn't allowed at all, uh, right now. And this, and you're new to the commission, but I think the planning commission over the last three or four years has dealt with several different uses, all of them having to do with animals, uh, in the M1 zone. But I won't say children or animals, but, um, I've evolved. And I'm going from animals to children, so there you go.
Well, and, and you have seen permitted uses in the sense that it's permitted on the land use table, but it's not fully subdivided, so they need to come in for a subdivision plot or it's a commercial site plan, so they're coming in for the site plan. But they're not coming in because they're permitted, they're coming in because of the subdivision or site plan. And if they don't need those things, then they can obviously just do it other than like Larry mentioned, the business license, so.
Okay, does it make sense to let it be permitted? Is that what you're proposing, is that it makes sense that it be permit- permitted? So it'd be automatic?
Yeah, it'd be a permitted use in the zone, like other things there on the use table that are permitted, you know? Um, you know, warehousing, the industrial use is a lot of things like that are permitted uses in the M1 zone, so.
Larry, do you have a portion of that table up on a presentation?
I don't.
Uh, so it was in the background packet, the, the, the table. So if there's no symbol, yeah, perfect. If there's no sample, it just means they can't have it at all. If there's a P, it typically means Larry can handle it. If there's a C, it's got to come back to us, uh, and then we review it.
Yep.
And I was seeing why C wouldn't be a better thing.
Well.
Better P.
Typically, the C comes in when it's anticipated that there's some kind of, uh, a condition that would be imposed, like, uh, for instance, um, a gas station near residential, the, uh, conditional use might make sense because the noise or whatever. Um, or if it's, you know, there, but a daycare in a manufacturing area, the manufacturing has a lot of noise. The daycare is not likely to affect the manufacturing with either, you know, sounds, smells, whatever. Um, and so there doesn't seem to be the reason for a condition to use. That's kind of how a C ends up on the chart instead of a P when there's an obvious detrimental effect that could come into play, uh, for the adjacent uses. So I think that's part of Larry's reasoning is there was no anticipated detrimental effect that a daycare would have on manufacturing.
On anything, on any.
At least not on manufacturing, right?
And Commissioner Allen, uh, Ellen Anderson just said that a majority of support was given and there was no opposition voiced at the city council. So that's what they do at the, the work meetings. And if they're, if they don't like it, they'll say something, but, so, four of them, which is a majority, said that they would like to see it. So that's the reason it's here.
I guess I'll jump up back on this. We're done with that agenda item. Do we have any other business to discuss? Great, well, we are adjourned for, uh, the next eighteen or so minutes, whatever, uh, fourteen minutes I have on this.
They will have to go back to council.
No, I just. Different, I only, I only have like four.
Great, I'm calling to order the August first, twenty twenty-three Planning Commission meeting of the city of West Jordan. All commissioners are present. Moving into the general meeting, we have first consent calendar for approved minutes from July eighteenth, twenty twenty-three. Commissioner Hatch?
I would like to request that the minutes be amended to include the dialogue between Larry Gardner and Commissioner Richardson on item number three. I believe it was last on the eighteenth. There was dialogue about comments made by Commissioner Richardson about property values and noise and traffic and many things were comments were made and Larry Gardner just said, can you tell this for sure? Is this, is this accurate? And I felt like those comments needed to be included in the minutes.
Can I, just for clarification on Commissioner Thomas, so maybe I have, I have the minutes in front of us. So on page four of the minutes between the paragraph search Catherine Richardson and George Winn.
Yes, that's correct.
I agree, I understand there was a, Larry responded to some of these comments that are documented. Does that sound like what you're after, Commissioner Tom?
Oh, I just was gonna get clarification on that, so.
Do we all need to huddle around the minutes?
Yeah, okay.
Any further discussion?
I would just concur with that, so. They wanna have Julie read back what she thinks she mentioned, so you've got some specific language before you vote on it. Or you might wanna have additional discussion if any other commissioner wants to weigh in on it.
Let's maybe start with Julie. I'm sorry to throw you under the bus, but you do have a mind like a steel trap. You're very good at writing all this down.
Well, I listened to him today, so I just have to note, to write down that, that period. Now that I know, I just wanted her to be specific on what part of the meeting so that I didn't go through the whole thing and write every conversation that went. But yeah, it's where you said, and so I'll just go and include. He had a question. I know he had a question to Commissioner Richardson about how, what her comments were based on. And so I can guess that's kind of the conversation.
Yes, thank you.
Commissioner Richardson?
I was just gonna say that either way would be fine with me. But I thought it was as written was kind of low representation, but I understand.
Okay. You wanna go ahead and take one? So we've had the discussion.
I'll start. I'll make a motion to approve the minutes with the amendment that I requested.
Commissioner Thomas?
And I'll second that motion then.
Okay, we've got a motion for Commissioner Hatch, a second by Commissioner Thomas. Any further discussion of the motion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Agenda item number two, public hearings with final action by the Planning Commission. This is the nine thousand South roadway extension. Nine thousand South, sixty-four hundred West, Abacus Highway, U one eleven preliminary major subdivision plant to dedicate property. Approximately thirteen point five acres for an extension of nine thousand South Ivory Homes and Gardner Development, the applicants. Do we have somewhere from the applicant here to address? Whoever would like to take it, feel free to please come up, give us a very brief presentation. I know it's, Taylor will also help out with it, but procedurally, we allow the applicant to go first. Push the button on the right. Perfect.
Alrighty, my name is Cole Peterson and I'm with the Gardner Group Developer. And yeah, we are just working to get this, the Ninetieth South extension approved and through, and so. Yeah, do you have any questions or?
It was great. We'll bring you back up. There are any further questions?
Hey.
We'll, we'll have Taylor run the, the rest of this.
Hey.
Well, thank you. Procedure is always fun, right?
Yes, very fun. Appreciate it. Thank you, guys.
All right, Taylor, go ahead.
All right, well, hard to follow that up, but. I mentioned this in the pre-meeting, but I just wanted to bring it up now in the public meeting. We did notice this as preliminary and final, but we're actually only asking for preliminary. The final approval will be at staff level, so just wanted to clarify that. As mentioned by the applicant, we're looking to dedicate about thirteen and a half acres to the city of West Jordan. This will allow for the extension of nine thousand South from sixty-four hundred West to Baccus Highway, which is also known as U one eleven. Here we can see the road dedication plant. It's a hundred and thirty-four foot wide strip of land that is really long. Here we can see it on our master transportation plan, our twenty forty transportation plan. It's this area outlined in red. It is anticipated to be a Uda Arterial Road. That's a four to five lane road. It's two lanes in each direction and a turn lane in the middle. Overview of the project, it's thirteen and a half acres being dedicated to the city. Nine thousand South currently ends just west of Ronwood Park. We have received money from the state to complete this roadway. It is anticipated this will eventually be transferred to UDOT. And this road does run between the Jones Ranch, now the Dry Creek Highlands Project, which is to the north of it, and to the large southwest quadrant of the south. I also.
That's your question right there.
Yep.
Sorry, I just wanted to jump really quick. I missed this part in the pre-meeting, so forgive me if it was already covered. Why is the city responsible for building this if it's just gonna be transferred to UDOT? They're giving us the money so we can build it so they can take it over? Why don't they build it?
That's a good question. I think part of it is we have other roadways that we're going to take over from UDOT, so we have to have a trade. I think is essentially what it is, is so we're building the road to their standard and then we'll trade it for, I think it's Newbingham Highway. I also just wanna mention one slight change from the staff report, and that's to a recommended condition number one. We just wanted to change that language up a little bit to say be conditional on UDOT approval of a hundred and thirty-four foot right of way. We didn't wanna necessarily say change type exhibit because there's a number of ways that we could get to that agreement with UDOT. And we didn't wanna pigeonhole ourselves into only one way to get to that solution. Beyond that, the other condition is that the detention ponds located at the northwest corner of nine thousand South and sixty-four hundred West shall be maintained by Dry Creek Highlands HOA and/or the Jordan School District. With that, we're recommending approval with those two conditions, and I'm happy to answer the questions you might have.
Maybe procedural question back on number two. How, how are the Dry Creek Highlands HOA and Jordan School District involved in this subdivision plat? I'm trying to figure, what is the mechanism by which we're holding them accountable?
I think one of the things we could do, it'd be as simple as a plat note that we put on the plat at that time, but we're also in negotiations with them as we're reviewing both of those plats, so it might actually take place somewhere outside of this road dedication.
And the reason for this note on the plat is and that some about five percent of the ninetieth South stormwater will be going into this pond, and so our utilities engineer wanted to make certain that we're not going to be responsible to maintain a pond that we're only putting five percent of the water in. So it's just a, a error on the side of caution, so it will be on the road dedication plat.
Okay. It makes sense. I assume that means the, the subdivider that is dedicating the road has some ownership in this.
Yes, yes, because along with the plat, there's also construction documents for Ninetieth South and those include drainage ponds, which will be going into this pond, which is part of the Dry Creek Highlands development. But that water, and so I think it's more, it's just as important that it's noted in this plat as it is in the Dry Creek Highlands plat.
That's perfect. That's what I was curious about. Did you have a, Commissioner Hatch?
Could you go back to the original map that you showed Taylor? Thank, oh, no, sorry. That one right there. So this is going to actually merge onto Bacca's Highway or U one oh one or Highway one, I mean, where, will it be an arterial street that won't?
Yes, that's correct. It will go all the way to U one eleven.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Commissioner Felton?
Well, we have it on this page. I'm curious, what, what is the interchange going to look like on, between Newbingham Highway and Ninetieth South once this is complete?
Yeah, I know that Ninetieth South, they're currently doing the corridor study, but I believe, and Todd is here to correct me, but I think it's going to be straight through. There's not gonna be the weird jog in the road, which there currently is as the road turns. So I, I believe the plan is for Ninetieth to continue straight all the way through.
So is, is Newbingham Highway gonna be treated similar to the way it's been treated on seventy-eight hundred South near the airport?
Yes, so that it will be fairly similar to that.
Thank you.
All right, this has been noticed as a public hearing, so we will open this up to discussion from the public. Feel free to come up. You'll have three minutes to address this particular item. If you're online, raise your hand. Okay, and seeing none or hearing none, we will close the public hearing and bring this back to the Planning Commission for further discussion or in motion. Commissioner Thomas?
I'll go ahead and make a motion if anybody has any objections. And we'll try to do this with the corrections, so. I move that the Planning Commission approves the preliminary major subdivision for Ninetieth South roadway extension approximately thirteen point five acres located between sixty-four hundred West and U one eleven Bacca's Highway with recommendations and conditions and requirements of approval listed on this report, including the changes on items one and two. Second.
We have a motion, Commissioner Thomas, a second, Commissioner Quinney, any further discussion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. I'd say welcome to West Jordan, but I guess it's what's bringing everything into West Jordan.
Or letting it leave.
Or let, no, or, or. Yes, we need that. All right, agenda item number three, we're now into public hearings with Planning Commission recommendations to the city council for final action. And agenda item three is for text amendment for the PRD and residential lot in bulk standards. Amend the two thousand nine West Jordan Municipal Code Section thirteen five C, plain residential development or PRD zone and code section thirteen five B three residential lot in bulk standards. Citywide applicability of the city of West Jordan's the applicant, Scott. It's all yours.
Thank you. This is, is a text amendment that has been directed by our city council back in March of this, of this past year. They, as a committee of the whole, the council began to, to look at the results of, of developments that had recently been approved. Specifically, the catalyst for the conversation was the, the approval of the residential subdivision on the northeast corner of forty-eighth West and Ninetieth South in the PRD zone. And some of the council members expressed some concern that the, the PRD zone was not as in alignment with the PC zone as, as it could be. One of the things that the council was talking about or concerned about was the, the, the depth of driveways and how if, if driveways were too shallow, there was a potential for larger vehicles to overhang sidewalks and impede pedestrian access and and, and force them out into the street, and so they, they saw it as a, as a potential safety issue. So the, the full council directed certain council members to form an ad hoc committee to take a deeper dive into this topic. I was part of those discussions afterwards, and you can see in your packet that we met a couple times. And the result of those ad hoc discussions was to bring back this draft text amendment to the full council, and I did that on June twenty-first, twenty twenty-three. You can see on page two of your staff report, the, the four bullet points that, that this text amendment focused on. The first being that there was sort of a beginning preamble portion of, of the PRD zone. And it talks about the minimum acreage that the PRD zone can be. And the proposal that you see in your packet is to reduce the acreage from the, the twenty acres to ten acres. And there's again some modifications to the preamble portion of our, of the PRD. Number two, the council wanted to retain the flexibility, the discretionary language the code already has to, to give them some flexibility so that they could approve something less than ten acres if, if it made sense, and so. Number three, again, this goes back to the, to the driveway length. And the best way to affect the driveway length is to, to look at the, the front yard setback. And so you can see that, that the number that the council subcommittee or this ad hoc committee settled on was twenty-two feet. So a minimum front yard setback of twenty-two feet. As, as we started, as we discussed that, we also looked at the other portions of our zoning ordinance regarding single-family residential development. You know, which we commonly refer to that as our R one zones. The R one zones currently, and you can see this in your pack as well. Most of the time they have a larger front yard setback from thirty to thirty-five feet, and, and so it's typically not an issue. However, the code currently has an exception if, if a residential lot, a single-family residential lot is on a knuckle or cul-de-sac, there is the opportunity to reduce that front yard setback all the way down to twenty feet. And that's to address the, sometimes the pie-shaped, the irregular-shaped lots coming off cul-de-sacs or knuckles. And so it's, it's just geometry, putting a rectangular box on a pie-shaped lot sometimes can be, be challenging, and so. To be consistent, though, the, the, the council supported a twenty-two foot exception or reduction instead of the twenty feet as the code currently shows. And as we looked at that recommendation from the council and kind of the real-world application, as, as we review hundreds of these building permits over, over time, over years. The adjustment of two feet didn't really cause us much alarm. There's always going to be the, the rare exception where it could be an issue where a home builder would have to modify their designs. They're, they're off-the-shelf standard designs to, to accommodate, but that should be the, the, the exception rather than the rule. And then number four, you can see that there were other amendments proposed that basically bring the PRD, the planned residential development, into greater uniformity or, or compliance with, with the planned community, the, the PC zones, so. We believe this meets the intent of what the council has directed us. But it's always good to get other eyes, and, and so there's wisdom in bringing this back, you know, through, through the planning commission, see if you, you have any questions or concerns. And at this time, like to see if there are any questions or concerns.
Commissioner Hatch? Thank you, Chair. I'm curious as to why the reduction from the PRD zone from ten, from twenty to ten? What was the reason by reducing that size limit?
Well, the PRD is, the code is currently written. I'll try to find it here. Basically, it's, it's a, it's a very, it's a very small window of, of where a PRD zone could be applied. When, when the Welby West project was brought to the city council, which is the project I referred to earlier, there was some, some angst that, that it was a pretty significant deviation from, I forget the acreage of Welby West, but eleven, eleven and a half, okay, eleven and a half. It was a deviation, a significant deviation from the, the minimum twenty acres, so. We went round and around whether that was, it was appropriate to even use the PRD tool, and so. We went round and around whether that was, it was appropriate to even use the purity tool and so if you look at the, the proposal going from a minimum of ten acres, um it just, it just resolves some of that concern that some of the council members had. Ultimately, uh Commissioner Hatch, they have the discretion. So it wasn't that, like they were drifting outside the bounds of the code. It was just making it, it potentially easier for them to, to make that exception in the future.
Right, cuz it was basically a minimum of twenty, maximum of thirty, but there was the provision where they could make a motion and go as low as ten and so the thought is that maybe if it's ten to thirty, why not just say ten to thirty and then they don't have to make any exceptions and and like Scott was saying, otherwise it's a very narrow range, not likely to be used.
Right, if you look at around the, 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 the city, it's hard, you're gonna be hard pressed to find a, a twenty to thirty acre piece of property. That's pretty specific, so we're just trying to expand the, the potential use of it.
Thank you, that helps.
Thank you. Uh since Welby West was the, the test case for this and they clearly had some heartburn about the way that was dealt with. If you applied these new standards to the Welby West project, how much variation would there be to what we end up with?
Specific to what?
The, well, like, I'm thinking it's like if we went from twenty to twenty two feet, I mean, how many more, how many fewer bots are we talking about? Did it make any actually significant changes?
They're all twenty two feet according to Taylor. Taylor was the planner of work.
Sure, and so I, I just was curious if, if there was any significant changes. Sounds like this is mostly just housekeeping.
Some, some of the changes and, and um I wish that the, that the council members were here to, to speak on their behalf, but oh, we do have, we do have council member Whitelock on, on, online, but it's okay. I'm just curious if there was any changes. Sometimes, sometimes it's best to have a baseline starting point. And so by putting a number into the code, it, it, it helps. Instead of trying to negotiate from twelve feet or eighteen feet up to twenty two feet, it's easier just to, to be really direct, really clear from the get go and say, hey, Mister developer, you're starting at twenty two feet. And, and then we've, we don't have to go back and forth and have that negotiation. That, that was part of the, what was explained.
I, I, I have no problem with this. I just was curious what the test case findings would have shown, but if it didn't change the, change it and change it, I was just curious.
Any further discussions for staff? Okay, hearing none. This is a uh public hearing, so we will open this up to the public. Uh if you've got any questions, you're here. Feel free to come up to the podium, uh three minutes to uh speak, or if you're online, feel free to raise your hand. Okay, seeing none, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing and bring this back to the commission for further discussion or a motion. Commissioner Quinney?
I'll go ahead and make a motion. Um based on the information and finding supports in the staff report and upon the evidence and explanations received today, I move the planning commission forward a positive recommendation to the city council for this application.
Commissioner Shelton?
I second that motion.
And we've got a motion from Commissioner Quinney, a second from Commissioner Shelton. Any discussion? All in favor? Hi, any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. And the fourth and final item on our agenda today is text amendment for daycares to amend the two thousand nine West Jordan Municipal Code, section thirteen five F two to allow daycares in the M one zone, citywide applicability with city of West Jordan as the applicant. Larry's turn.
So similar to the last ordinance amendment, this was an issue by a majority of the council from a committee of the whole meeting. Um the council would like to see daycares in the M one zone as a use. Currently, daycares are prohibited in the M one zone. Uh which is probably by and for the most used industrial zone in the city. Daycares are uh basically allowed in all of their zones, uh commercial zones, office zones. A lot of daycares in residential areas, different rules apply, of course, until the council feels like that there is a need for them in an industrial zone, so this is a very simple amendment to the uh, to West Jordan City Code. The definition already exists, so that is not being added or amended. So basically what this will be doing is allowing daycare as a permitted use in the M one zone of West Jordan City. Do you have any questions for me?
Questions for staff? Uh I'll ask one, and that is, did we look at other cities in the valley and see what they do?
Um it's all like city allows in South Salt Lake Murray, so it's not. But having worked with South Salt Lake, their industrial zone was like the dumping ground for everything, so you could do anything there.
All right, it's not.
But a daycare is the dumping ground.
All right, um well, this is a, another public hearing, so we will open that public hearing and invite anyone who would like to address the planning commission to uh either come up or raise their hand and speak for up to three minutes. And again, seeing none, we'll go ahead and close that public hearing and bring this item back to the commission for further discussion or motion. Commissioner Quinney?
Based on the evidence contained in the staff report, upon the evidence and explanations received today, I propose the planning commission for a positive recommendation to city council for this application.
Commissioner Hatch?
I will second.
Okay, we've got a motion, Commissioner Quinney, a second, Commissioner Hatch. Any further discussion of motion? All in favor? Hi, any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Commissioner Thomas? Oh, you're a jerk.